You can turn on the recording.
You're good to go, sir.
All right, bring this meeting of the planning board to order. It's open session and public comments. From anybody?
Brady's gonna win.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, approval not required, 215 Herring River Road. Anyone here representing? The applicant?
Yes, this is Bob Freeman with Schofer Brothers, representing the applicant.
Okay, Bob. Why, the reason why it was continued, number one, because you weren't on at the last meeting. And number two, Alfred had a question, and I happen to know what the question was. Specifically, the way you're dividing the lot is a buildable lot into two unbuildable parcels, correct?
Correct.
And I think Alfred's question was that because now, and they seem, they seem the only explanation is you're going to go to the abutters on either side.
That's correct.
If that is the case, rather than the tax assessor having to put the lots together, why you didn't do approval not required 81p plans or perimeter plans for each lot buying the unbuildable section and making it one lot?
You mean making plans showing the two abutting parcels already combined with the?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I'm not quite sure there that the property hadn't transferred yet. My understanding was they wanted the plan, this plan done before the property was sold to the, to the two abutters.
Okay.
So it's a procedural thing more?
That's that's my understanding. I don't see that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it is your, is it your understanding that once the real estate transfer has happened, that that owners will come back with approval not required perimeter plans?
That I'm not sure. I'm not sure what they're gonna do after that, or if they will just. I'm not sure. I can't answer that question. They wouldn't need an approval not required plan to combine the lots if they owned them. They could just do it with a no new lines plan at that point. If they own both parcels, they wouldn't need another planning board plan to do that. They would just show it as one parcel if they were going to do something with it. I think if that's what you're asking me.
Well, that, but I mean, the tax assessor is now gonna do it and tax it as a 40,000 square foot lot or wherever it is with parcel, with two parcels. Most of the time it was done as adding that unbuildable section to the other lot all at one time. I think that was his question and the reason for it. But if you don't have a reason for it, then that'll do it. Any board members have any questions on this particular approval not required plan?
I guess just.
David?
Yeah, I was just curious because it just reiterates your question, Jerry is, is there any compelling reason as to why not an 81p wasn't done? Perimeter plan? Is it just that this is the steps they wanted to take was first, you know, do an A and R and then, you know, there's no, you don't really have an answer for that one. They just wanted to go this direction, I guess, right?
That's what I understand, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So my question is very similar. Why, why would that be the case? I, I feel like I'm being manipulated here somehow because I don't understand a linear kind of progression. Might just be my stupidity, but.
I like the way you said that.
Well, if Bob doesn't want to answer it, I can give an overview.
I'm not sure how to answer that.
Basically, without any knowledge, it's probably best substantially less expensive to do it this way. In other words, you have the owner in the middle who's gonna sell two unbuildable lots to the neighbors, two parcels to the neighbors. They probably are required from the neighbors to do a plan. As far as that owner A is concerned, or the owner in the middle, all he's concerned about is his parcel of land and to get the land divided so they can deed it out. If they in fact have to file a new plan, the engineer asked to come in and now do if a new plant, if a plan on the abutting lots hasn't been done recently, has to go out and resurvey, which is substantially more expensive and probably owner in the middle didn't want to pay for it. And the owners on each side until they know they had the property. So I think it's coming down to dollars and cents is a simple equation. Which we.
Well, that makes sense, but.
Wait a minute, I'll go. Did you get your answer, Beth?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but Tim Brady has his hand up.
You wanna chime in, Tim?
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I do. Just as a third party, I was listening a couple of months ago when you had the same discussion about another parcel that was to be, was being divided in two. And I think the planning board is thinking way too hard about this. In order to divide an individual parcel, it has to come to the planning board as an A and R or could come some as a, as approval, but that wouldn't happen. So it comes to the planning board as an A and R in order to create a new property line. And as the planning board, all you have to do is look at it and say, is it an A and R or is it a subdivision? And that's your whole job. Whether or not another survey gets done to actually combine it to the two lots that are beside it is an entirely separate issue, in my opinion.
Can I add to, can I add to that, Jerry? Comment. So Tim, I think you spoke very well on that. But in reality, and then just hear me out, we may never see a plan because those people may never choose to build and therefore they would not be required to do a perimeter plan.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, so it's not a big deal, right?
Yeah, it could sit there as two parcels forever. Not the simplest thing for the, for the assessing department, but that's, that's just the way life goes. The, the A and R is simply required in order to create that new line. And the planning board just looks to see, is it a subdivision or is it an A and R?
I guess that's, that's where my problem lies is distinguishing that. I just felt like, how do I know if we're being manipulated or not?
So, so in my opinion, like I say, you look to see is it an A and R which allows a property line to be created? And it's not a subdivision because you're not obviously creating a way. And that's really the only thing you have to think about. All the rest of it is sort of accessory to the discussion.
What if a way already exists?
What's that?
What if a way already exists?
Oh, then you've got an entirely different issue.
No, a way, all right, let me jump, jump in here. A way exists because this lot is on a way. It's on a Herring River Road. So a way exists. What it, what it's saying basically, approval not required is that you are not creating any new roads. So consequently, this individual could simply walk in as they've done approval not required plan, not discuss whether or not it was even going to a butters and simply say, I'm creating two non-buildable lots. Conversation, is it an approval not required plan? Yes, because no new roads were created. That's the only thing we can address on an approval not required plan. We're not, we're not condoning if there's any zoning violations. We like to stamp on it, stamp on it. But no, that's, that's the simple question. What happens after this? Other engineers have done it a different way and they've brought in this subsequent plans right away all at one time. So we see these things. But indirectly, yes, they're following the rules. Nothing's being put over. It's the simplest way for them to do what they're doing.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good.
Olga?
We talked about it costing more money for them to get a perimeter plan or whatever is the next step. But in fact, they're saving money because their taxes are less if they combine the two lots, the abutters combined.
Because the minute indirectly, the, the reason why this is being done is because it's going to the abutters. They you wouldn't take, I guess you could, but you normally wouldn't take a buildable lot, divide it in half, make it unbuildable and think the taxes are going to be cut because now you gotta separate names and now you've truly made it unbuildable. As soon as this happens and gets recorded and comes back to town hall, town hall is gonna see that that property is going to be joined up next door. And in fact, they're going to now be reassessed as a larger lot in the town of Welfley. So we're not gonna lose out on any tax dollars. That's not gonna happen. So. You know.
I just thought unbuildable lots are taxed like 10% of what they would be or they're assessed at 10%.
They are.
So they would save money if they don't combine them and we don't care.
They would lose a couple hundred thousand dollars, Olga, because if they, if they made both lots, if they took one buildable lot, divided in half, recorded the plan as two unbuildable lots, now they'd have to hold them in different ownership. The minute they put them in different ownership, they became unbuildable permanently.
Even in an ADU?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean.
That's where my head went. This is a great way to put it, put it in an ADU.
That's just not gonna happen. Rather than continue the conversation, is there any motion to basically approve this as an approval not required plan?
I'll make the motion.
All right, David?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Yep, wait a minute. He just said, I'm gonna make a motion. I didn't know what it is.
I thought it so moved.
David, what's your motion?
Oh, I made the motion. I'll make the motion as approval not required.
Thank you. Olga, you gonna second?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye? All those in favor? Unanimous? Got that Rebecca?
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
You're welcome. I hope that was helpful.
So what is the process for picking up the plan now?
We'll need to sign the plan. Rebecca, when are you going to be into town hall this week?
She's still muted.
I'm sorry, you're cutting in and out, so I'm trying to find a good spot for you. Can you repeat your question?
When are you going to be in town hall this week?
Oh, I'll be in Thursday and Friday.
Okay.
All day.
Are there any board members that cannot make it in Thursday or Friday to sign a plan?
And I can make it available to you anytime next week. You just have to let me know.
Okay, so why don't we, from Freeman's edification here, why don't we say that you will give him a call Friday? Or Mr. Brady call you and find out how many people have signed?
Okay.
Everybody.
Once I sign it, it's an approval not required plan by the chair, so it can be recorded.
So why don't you just come in tomorrow morning?
Are helpful, okay?
You just come in tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I do know they got a closing coming up pretty quickly and they're.
When's the closing?
They have this plan with it.
When's the closing?
They tell me it's tomorrow afternoon.
So Mr. Parent will come to my office tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM and he will sign the plan, no problem.
Okay.
Or I'll drive to his house and he'll sign it anyway.
Very accommodating.
Wow.
And the chair is on file at the registry of deeds as my signature is only required.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So any additional members that can, because it's always nice to have more than one signature makes things a little cleaner. See if you can get into town, town hall early tomorrow morning and sign.
Yep, I'll be there at 9:00 AM and I'm not leaving till four, so.
Cool.
Good. Thank you.
I get screened at the door.
Thank you.
I will make sure they let you in, David.
You're welcome, Mr. Freeman.
Cool.
Um, okay, moving on. Tim, lot release on Sim Hall Road?
Yes, good evening, everyone. And I want to apologize for missing the last meeting. I think that was the first meeting that I ever just totally forgot to do. So just another indicator that I should be retiring probably.
No, it's just another indicator that you're getting old.
So yes, it is a partial, it's a, it's a request for a partial covenant release. It still leaves lots four, seven, eight, and nine under the covenant. And the only work that's actually required at this point is the final paving and the final work on the slopes. And the paving is, is planned to be done this spring. So the whole thing should be, should be wrapped up in the near future. And I did, I did want to talk a little bit about a final covenant release and whether a bond would be appropriate. They, the owners do plan on keeping lot nine. So there would be no covenant release necessary for lot nine, at least for the foreseeable future. So whether lot nine would be enough for the, for the release of the others or whether you'd like to do some type of a bond for that as the final work is done. But I guess that's a little extra discussion. Right now, the discussion is just for the two lots that I submitted the application for.
Yeah.
I, I don't think that even the paving company is open till April, right?
No, that's it. No, they, yeah, it won't be till spring.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else want to chime in before I do?
Go for it.
Yes, if we release these two lots, we got four more. However, with all due respect to your client, Tim, this thing's been going on for years.
Oh, understood.
I'd like to get it off the books. I, I'm just tired of, quite honestly, I, I really want to move on. I don't want the town to have to worry about. You know, yes, he's got, the paving's gonna go real quickly and from, from Billy Rogers, that first coat was, was more than ample in requirements as far as what was laid down on the base coat.
Right.
So that second coat is gonna go on very quickly, probably within two to three, two days from the time they start.
Yeah.
I think the longest thing that's gonna take is to make sure, and I, I do see that he's, they're working on the shoulders on occasion, is to get all of that grass grow, growing.
Right.
I really, I think that the board's been good if we, we release these two lots, but I, I really would like to see it done, planted. If he has to hydro seed it, go in and hydro seed it and just get it done so we can give a final release. So that's the two cents from me. We can re, we can certainly readdress it in the I think the board, myself, and I, I think the rest of the members would like to really see this completed and done and over with.
Right. I, I can't hear all of what you're saying, Jerry. You break up on occasion. But I did get the gist of it that you would like the thing to be taken care of. And I totally understand that. And he's ready to do that too. It's just a matter of getting it done. And so that brings me back to my question of if we want any more lots, do you need a bond for that? Can we put money in an escrow account? Is holding on to lot nine sufficient for the remainder of the work? And that's what I was wondering is gonna need to take place there.
Well.
Or just finish it.
I understand that, but if we, if we'd like to get something else released before it's finished, because the lots have been selling pretty quickly. It sat for a while, but now all the lots seem to be getting, getting under contract and being ready for sale. So yeah, we do want to get it finished, but in the meantime, we'd like to sell lots as necessary. Again, that's not something that we have to work out today, as long as you'll release these two lots that I've requested tonight. But I would like to talk further about, it doesn't have to be tonight, but I would like, like to talk further about more releases before the road is completed, if that becomes necessary.
Okay.
It shouldn't, yeah.
It's an education pro, we might as well continue the conversation quickly. This is an education process for new members as well. The planning board has no the planning board may request a covenant. But the ultimate decision as to whether a covenant or a bond is posted is by the applicant. We have to go along with what the applicant wants. Mass law allows, you know, and I'm not telling you anything different. Tim, you know that, but for the rest of the members on the planning board who have not had to go through a bond process, we have no choice in the matter. We love to see a covenant because we're always tremendously ahead under a covenant. There's no bookwork involved. So a lot of it depends on, for example, we've now released two more lots. To David's if we release the two lots, I'm assuming, don't make an assumption, Jerry. To David's point, the plant's not gonna open for McAdam until April, probably April 1st.
Which is only five or six weeks away.
Right, so, so therefore, with four lots under covenant, based on what he's selling those lots for, the planning board, if they release these two lots now, has approximately a million dollars under covenant.
Right.
To finish the subdivision, which is gonna, is gonna take less than a hundred thousand dollars. So if you're saying gonna do, if your question is, what is the planning board gonna do between now and April 1st if you want to release another lot? That would be a discussion that probably is not a deal breaker and we release a lot.
Yeah. I, I can, I got the gist of your story. I'm fine with that at this point in time. We'll just see how things go.
If you walk in and say, okay, fine, after April 1st, we're cutting off at three lots, then you've got the choice of what you've got to do is seed the rest of it. You know that.
Yeah.
For the board members, if, if they choose to do so, they've got to go out, get an estimate, what it's gonna cost to seed and loan the rest of that subdivision. And then we sit down and we negotiate how many times more over that bill, we want to hold an escrow as a cash bond and it goes to the town treasurer and they hold it.
Till everything's done.
If that, if that cost comes in at Lomond seeding at $25,000, we're gonna hold a hundred thousand. And we know that under no circumstances do we have a problem sending somebody in there to do the job.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's what we'll go.
That's fine.
You're all set?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, so let's go back to, is there any board members had a question on, on that discussion? Okay, so let's go back to, is there any motion or discussion on allowing lots two and five to be redo, redo released from the covenant?
I move that we release lots two and five from the covenant.
Okay. Any second?
I second.
Okay, Bonnie seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
All right, thank you all very much.
Tim, how fast do you need that covenant signed? Release?
I don't know. I, not today or tomorrow kind of a thing. Next week would be fine as far as I know.
But if you're coming in tomorrow to sign the A and R, you can sign that too because they're right together.
Okay, so we do have the release filled out?
Mm-hmm.
At town hall?
Yes.
All right, so the planning board members, when you're in signing that other covenant.
Yeah, I'll have both of them right next to each other.
That sounds great.
Were you questioning Rebecca's efficiency? I'm, no, I would never, no, I know better than that, David.
Yeah, okay.
Listen.
Wow.
I'm like a big wig now, people. I am important.
Okay. Tim, we'll try and get that as soon as possible and she'll let.
And yes, Tim, I will let you know as soon as it's all signed.
All right, thank you all very much.
Say good night to your cat.
Have a nice night.
Good night.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Good night.
All right. King Street. Everybody have the information in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was in the packet for last week, right?
No, this was in the packet this week.
Oh. Oh, yes, 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 of course, of course. Sorry, yes.
Okay, Bonnie.
I got it.
Keep me on my toes. All right.
Zachary is here, just in case if you have any questions for him, he's here on, and if you want to ask him anything.
Before I get to Zachary, if we even need to, just to clarify, because I clarified this before the meeting opened with a comment, and I think I'll do it on, on record. The initial special permit on this particular property, we only, only required Zachary, I think it was eight parking spaces? Do you remember?
I, not off the top of my head. I could easily look it up while you're talking. The requirement was, we had. Well, we're not really adding any. We just reconfigured the existing lot.
The original application that went to the Board of Appeals did not come to the planning board because even though they had more parking spaces, 10 or more shown on the plan they submitted. When it was sent to me, I asked why it was sent to the planning board for significant impact? Because significant impact only requires if 10 or more parking spaces are required by the permit. That permit with the square footage of part of the building trigger 10 parking spaces, therefore the planning board had no input. So we didn't just pass over it. It wasn't needed to come before the planning board. Now with that retail space labeled B on the site plan and I think you're adding in Zachary, the, what's upstairs on the main.
Oh, yeah, I wanna, I wanted to add in the upstairs. It's just the offices for the, as the offices for the retail.
And was that on originally?
It wasn't anticipated that we would be using the second floor at all for the dispensary use.
Okay, so the calculations for adding the office space upstairs and retail space B triggered how many parking spaces? I'm.
I'm just pulling it up now. Hold on one second.
Okay.
So now we are saying the total spaces is thirteen spaces of retail and six spaces of office for a total of nineteen required.
I don't see nineteen spaces.
So there is six in the back.
You've got on your zoning and now and ask is that required nineteen?
Proposed twenty.
Proposed twenty.
So the numbers on the plan, the numbers that are circled are the number of spots in that cluster. So there are two at the handicap paved area up against the building. And then if you circle around to the right from 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 Route Six, there's two sort of facing Route Six, and then another four facing the drainage area. And then there's three parallel spots as you continue along the along the drainage area. And then there's another six to the back corner. It he drew four, but he said three. Well, three in a walkway, I suppose, up against the back of the back deck. And then there is a spot in the front where the old drive-in was, but we're using that as loading, so we didn't bother to call it a parking spot, because we really aren't. We're gonna keep that available for loading.
Okay.
And there's a, there are a couple extra spots to squeeze cars. I've seen it, you know, in action with a lot more, but this is this is comfortable.
So basically, you've got the nineteen required. All right. Planning board members, any question?
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm at a little bit of a stumbling block here because just to brief, correct me if I'm wrong, but the brief history of the building was it was CCB and T. There were some offices upstairs, and I don't know what the little storage shed out was up front. I don't remember. But there was more than one use on that property. It got bought, it got renovated. It got renovated in a singular use. And that singular use is the pot shop. So any of the multiple uses are long gone. Those have been abandoned. Now, what I'm having trouble with is getting beyond five point four, point one, point three, which is the intensity schedule. And this is the very bylaw that killed, for lack of a better word, Thor's project downtown. So I don't see that he can expand upstairs, maybe for the office for the pot shop, but certainly not a secondary retail, not associated with the pot shop. And that's what's being asked for on this application, so I don't even think we can entertain it.
I agree.
I'm afraid I don't understand. I mean, it looked to me like this is something that's already been agreed to by the zoning board of appeals. And the only difference.
No.
Don't they haven't? It looked to me.
They have not addressed five point four, point one, three, which is the intensity use schedule, which is the very same thing that, like I say, lack of a better word, killed Thor's project. It was more than one principal use on a property. That property did have it some time ago, but those have since abandoned. Now, if you read that bylaw, they can expand them into commercial and C two districts only, not in the central district. And that's what this is being asked of. So I don't think we can entertain this.
But it really isn't a separate use, is it?
No.
They're asking for retail use.
All right, let's 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 bring this in for a minute. There's a couple of things before the planning board here. Actually, there's only one major thing. We are not the permit granting authority on this special permit.
Correct.
Okay.
We have to weigh in on it.
Oh, no, we are not. We are only here to discuss the flow of traffic and the site plan. We're not here to discuss the use of the property.
But.
That is, that, wait a minute, you finish, that is the Board of Appeals decision. The Board of Appeals has got to decide whether or not two retail uses are two primary uses or one primary use. Ten or twenty Briar Lane is a I don't want to bring that into discussion, but it was a different, if it was it's a different cat. You had a principal you had residential use, you had commercial use, and you had two different commercial uses because you had a yoga studio or exercise studio, and you had a form of a coffee shop, restaurant kind of thing going on. So you had different principal uses. I don't have the answer, and it's not within the planning board's purview to say, wait a minute, there's two retail, because marijuana sales is retail. So what they have is a primary use on that property, which is retail. So is the parking?
They they will have to decide that, but they also have to address it. They can't ignore it.
But that's not for us to address. That is for them to address.
But so Jerry. We were asked to weigh in, the way it was advertised, any concerns or suggestions. That's the way it was advertised. It wasn't say to review the parking plan exclusively. So I am weighing in. My concern is that you have to address that bylaw. I don't care what the outcome is, but you have to address it.
But Dave, no, I don't. Not the planning board does not. How?
No, no, the planning board doesn't. The zoning board does.
Yes, but the Board of Appeals has only one recourse to send this to the planning board. And that's for significant impact as site plan review. Site
Hmm.
Not the permit. What the Board of Appeals did or said when they turned it over to us is not part of this equation. The, they can't send any permit they so desire over to the planning board in one hour input. Because it's not in the zoning bylaw to do that. What is in the zoning bylaws, if you hit ten parking spaces or more, you hit significant impact, and therefore, we can look at it for parking, for egress, those kind of things, not whether or not there's a zoning violation. That's the Board of Appeals bellywreck. Okay, Beth?
So that was my question. So we're over ten parking spaces?
Yes, so that triggered them.
Does it not matter if it's one retail operation or two different things?
Exactly.
Ten parking spaces is what we're paying attention to?
Yes. The answer now. Bonnie, when a special permit is submitted to the Board of Appeals, if the decision by the Board of Appeals, and it's not even a decision, if that plan specifies parking as per required in the zone, or it's required in the zoning. They can provide twenty parking spaces if they want, but if the zoning says you only have to give us eight, they don't have to send it to us because it's not a significant impact, they're providing more parking spaces. So when they receive a project that in this kind of case says required parking under wellfleet zoning bylaws is nineteen parking spaces, that automatically that meeting is advertised, posted, the meeting is opened and immediately continued. No discussion, no nothing. They cannot discuss that permit. It is forwarded to the planning board to look at significant impact and the parking, which we are supposed to do. And we have to answer within thirty days. Once they get that, if they don't get it, they can continue their permit. If they do get it, they can take our recommendations, or they can throw those recommendations in the wastepaper basket. But they are the permit granting authority. They make the determination, and to David's point, okay, is a retail use and a residential two primary uses? Or is a retail use and a retail use two primary? Or is it only one because it's the same kind of use? That's.
That's what they'll have to discuss, yeah, yeah.
Their call.
Yeah, that's my point.
I can see a look on Bonnie's face, so that's why I can read it.
Yeah, I'm totally lost because I, what I read in the application was that if that the second building might be used for retail, so they'd both be used for retail. So I don't understand what the conversation is about a second use.
Well, what we.
Because it could be viewed at two ways, Bonnie, yeah.
Zachary is.
Yeah.
Again.
Yeah, I think I think I could add, if it's if it's all right, I could add some color to to the reasons and and a little bit of the history. If it if it matters, I I hear your discussion, and it may not matter for your discussion, but.
No, it's, it's, this is.
If you're interested, I could tell, well, that when when I applied for the special permit, the original one, we had this old building, and we had, we thought, okay, we have enough to restore this one building. We didn't know what to do with the second building. We said, we're not doing anything. It's out of scope. And so the zoning board had a lot of questions about what's going to happen with this other building when they gave us the special permit for the original building. And I said, I don't, I honestly said, I don't know. I probably some sort of other retail. As as recently as about two years ago, she sells seashells, so it was a retail use, and it may not be abandoned yet. It's pretty close, the two-year mark where it becomes abandoned. Um, so at the time that I was given the special permit for the main building, it was, that was the second use on the site, because there was an existing retail in the smaller structure that we're talking about adding now today. Because of the COVID emergency, I'm thinking, I want to have, I'm asking for flexibility, and we're gonna see what the zoning board says. But I'm asking for the flexibility to use it as a um, a curb service building for now. And if COVID goes away, I would like the ability to have some sort of boutique or smaller retail store there. It's a separate business.
Okay, and to stop you there.
Okay.
With all due respect, I have to stop.
No, absolutely, yep.
Again, that is outside the purview of the planning board. What we, what we simply are here to decide is the egress, is the parking, is the access to the parking, is the flow of the traffic okay for nineteen cars in and out of that site? The plan is showing that building is retail. How it's presented on a permit or at the hearing is outside of the planning board purview or consideration.
Okay, so Jerry.
Yes.
I I defer to you and 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 Dave, but it seems to me, driving by it all the time over years of time, when it's been different things, it's a lot of parking spaces for that area. It just seems uh 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 enormous to me to expect that many cars in that area at one time and coming in and out onto onto Main Street.
Well, when it was a bank.
When it was a bank on a Friday afternoon, there were a lot more than nineteen there. I guarantee you that.
Yeah, we, when you, when you had the bag back to the the CC for the older individuals on the planning board that can remember when EBT was in full operation. The as Zach said, there was a drive-up window where the words property loading area is.
Yeah, I remember that.
Right, people would drive in. There would be parking.
Well, there wasn't really parking. They drove in and they drove out.
No.
Yeah, why didn't you keep that for the dispensary and have a drive-through pot shop?
They went to the.
I was just gonna say that.
Okay, they went to the bank to park, and they parked in front of retail A space B space, which was a real estate office that handled rentals in the summertime. It was over on summer. It was the bank. So not only did they come in park in those locations, they in fact, in fact, parked where number six and number three numbers are for parking and number three and area.
And it wasn't a problem? And it was not a problem?
On the building, pulled in, pulled in to the front of, parallel to Main Street, to the drive-up window, did their business where there was three, sometimes three cars parked behind each other, waiting to get up.
Did a drive-up, yeah.
Then that car proceeded forward through with turn the corner where the exit reserve parking is and went back onto Main Street. So in fact, to David's point, there's less congestion now on the parking situation than there was then because traffic really being, not having to worry about somebody coming from that drive-up. And it basically held just about not more, because sometimes they would double park, go in and get out pretty quick. So it handled it all very well.
So then I only have one other question.
By all means.
The the bike route.
Yes.
We don't, we haven't seen anything for that yet.
Well, we have.
We have.
We we have, we have some proposals about that, and how does that impact this? Because it seems to me if what I've seen is gonna go through, it's directly related to this property.
Well, again, you're right. If the way the original plan read from what I could see, they were saying the state was going to go by this particular parcel and go up as far as the Wicked Oyster.
Correct.
It appeared that that bike sidewalk was six feet wide. The applicant made sure when they did all the renovation on the property to stake the lot line to make sure they were staying on their own property. So in fact, the old CCB and T building, that island came out into town land and into Main Street. They've made sure that that has in fact ended.
I get that, but that doesn't, that doesn't have to me, that that doesn't speak to cars going in and out where there's a bike lane.
Yeah, but he's not changing any of the accesses. Yeah, he's not changing any of the accesses. They haven't been there for forty years.
Those cars are coming and going through a bike path.
Well, easy to hit the bicycles that way, I think.
Even, even, even if you want to call it a bike.
Potential bike path.
Okay, even if we want to call it a path used by bikes that is presently being used at the present time on Main Street. We have the same problem, Beth, when you look at Route Six with Bay Sales.
But I don't equate the traffic Bay Sales and a pot shop. I just don't.
Oh, you've got to. Oh, you've got to got to look at it from Cumberland Farms. Look at the amount of traffic that's going in and out across those two entrances that the bike tracks, the bike path is going to go by.
No one said the state was smart.
This.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be in the back.
What should be in the back?
The bike path should be in the back.
It could be in the park. Get it out of Main Street.
Exactly. Um, but this is a main intersection. I think it's complicated. Route Six is bad enough. But this is turning into Main Street.
Which they already have curb cuts, so they're not asking for curb cuts.
I know.
No, I mean, what's our decision? Is is our only decision to approve or
Got to quit parking.
The number of parking spaces. I'm I'm struggling to understand what the decision is of the planning board in this discussion.
Our decision
adequate.
Our decision is um.
Adequate parking. Simple.
No, it's one of them.
No, the our our it's not a decision, number one.
A voice.
It's an opinion.
It's an it's an opinion. It's a no, it's a
The voice.
It's there you go. It's it's a voice and recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Because we deal with subdivisions, we deal with egress and access into subdivisions. Therefore, when the zoning bylaws were written back in sixty six, when you hit ten parking spaces or more, they gave it to us. I'll see if I can see if I can quickly relate this to something else. Cumberland Farms came to the Board of Appeals for a special permit when they were going to build. That triggered thirty parking spaces. That triggered significant impact. They sent it to the planning board. The planning board really couldn't stop project. They already had curb cuts. But what we asked for is to change the radiuses on those curb cuts. So when people and to widen it, so when people were coming off of Route Six, they didn't have to come to almost a complete stop like they are doing in Eastham. They could move in and out of that location easier and keep traffic flowing at a better rate of speed instead of coming almost to a stop and having rear end collisions or head on collisions. So Bonnie, those are the kind of things that the Board of Appeals is looking at from the planning board to say, okay. Are the distances between um where he's got granite curb? Um, where the access in and access out? Um, the first one coming from Route Six. Are those wide enough? Are they are they making the right turn? Are they are they getting into parking spaces, intruding into parking spaces? Can the traffic move around the building? Is all that traffic being rerouted when it gets to the back of the building to the front two areas? Or is it be rerouting to another egress as well? So there seems to be a separation in a timely manner to go around the building and get away from the access coming into Route Six. Those are the kind of things we look at.
So really, the 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 map we need to be looking at is the one that has those egresses. It's the whole plot. We we don't need to be looking at the maps of the interiors of the buildings.
No, you have no. They submit those because that was one copy of the submittal that they forwarded to us.
Okay.
Basically.
Now I know what I need to look at.
That's correct.
Okay, so basically you're looking at the the one that says site information. Uh, layout plan at the bottom right hand corner, C dash three oh.
I got it.
Okay. So
So I I I'm just going to reiterate. Now we have unlike Covington Farms, which is strictly Route Six. We now have the intersection of Route Six and Main Street. A lot of traffic and a bike path proposal. It just seems to me to be really dense to now have thirteen or more parking spaces coming in and out onto that. It's I think it's a little different than it was when it was just a bank. There was no proposed bike path there. Um, as there is now.
No, but
but and I didn't notice it as a problem when it was a bank.
Well, there were a lot of cars there because there was not only the bank, the retail in front. But Jerry, as you remember, uh, I think briefly Steve Rose was there because I worked upstairs and so was Arthur, you know? Arthur Croce was upstairs too. So there are a lot of people coming and going from there. There were more than
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
When are we talking?
Twenty spaces meets the definition of the bylaw or nineteen, and he's showing twenty. So he's got more than adequate for what he's proposing, so it shouldn't be an issue in that respect.
I'm sorry, Beth. Did you say something?
When you're talking about these past times, what when are we talking about?
Forty eighties back, you know? I don't think I think CCB and T was there.
Through the nineties, right?
Yes.
The TD Bank was there, I think, in the early two thousands and uh, Clear Carroll properties.
Two thousand three, two thousand and four is when they moved out.
Yeah.
And then you still had
Claire Carroll was there.
And you still had the law office upstairs for a little while and you had a real estate office there for a while.
And Mr. Perry, may I may I address some of the, I think that the prop the the issues is, one of the issues, I I believe to to Beth's point is that the buildings were there and your bylaw, the amount of parking that's needed is based on square footage. And I've restored the buildings as is I haven't extended the footprint whatsoever. So to not allow the parking would mean mandating me to tear down square footage of historic structure.
Correct. It would be a taking. Yeah, it'd be constituted taking almost.
The building's already there. I'm not not
I'm questioning that. I'm questioning access.
Yeah, they changed it.
All right, all right. Let's see if we can do it this way. Beth. Our job is not to deny the permit. Our job is to make the best we can with the site.
I agree with that.
Okay, so let me throw this out to you. Let's take the entrance nearest to Route Six. You have a access and an egress proposed for the right?
Yeah.
All the other planning board members with me?
Yep.
Okay. We have an egress to the far west of that property. At least a hundred
Seventy eight? A hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty five?
No, that's the whole property line. It's not that far.
Oh, that's not just that? Oh, okay.
Eighty feet, eighty feet.
Yeah, eighty to a hundred feet away. You have an egress.
Yeah.
All right. Again, our job is to make the flow of the parking as good as we possibly can.
Right.
One aspect could be the recommendation to the Board of Appeals is recommend that they narrow down that curb cut. First curb cut from the width of probably forty feet. And instead of an access and egress, make it access.
One way in, one way out.
One way in, one way out. So that way, when they come in, they go around the building. Those parking spaces have to back out anyway. Uh, the first two on the corner, the next four, the handicap. Um, you back out, you go around the building, come back out at the other end, the visibility to the right, the visibility to the left. Now you only have one place where they cross with bikes going across and one egress.
I like that much.
Jerry, you're gonna you're gonna confuse the stoners. I'd leave it the way it is.
Why?
It works. That's the way it's worked.
Well, so you have people going in and people stuck, not being able to get out because people are lined up getting in. And from both ends, coming both ways, people are trying to get in, which prevents people from getting out. It's not a it's not a good mix.
I agree with Beth. Yeah.
All I'm doing is
I'm not
table for discussion. That's that's why we have it in front of the board.
There there is a one way sign proposed at the corner where it becomes where it becomes tight around when you when you go around the corner of the second building. We we do have one way, so we're only allowing people to exit who come in the handicap spots and things like that. We wouldn't. We're trying to make things as convenient as possible, especially for handicap spots. There's really only two for uh, eight spots that would be using that egress. And I I I assume that would be used more in the off season. Um, because we wouldn't be using the back at all except for employees.
But isn't, I mean, in off season, in the first in the first um curb cut, you have um, entering on the right hand side and right next to it exiting out of the
Yeah, that's how it that's how it's been used. It's a very wide curb cut. We actually reduced the curb cut by ten feet already in the original.
That's what I thought you did. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, it's extremely wide. It's still Yeah, we reduced it to have more space for the uh, turning radius of the handicapped spaces.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, okay.
So I mean, we put a lot of thought into the flow of it. We've we've spoken, the other thing to to maybe ally ally some concerns is we've spoken extensively to the police department um, about traffic concerns. We're going to have a police detail at their at their discretion. Um, so there are there are other ways to mitigate it than redesigning the driveway.
Well, I I I can tell you
No, we would pay for that.
Oh.
We already made one mistake because we I thought when we did Cumberland Farm it accessed one egress as entrance only and one exit only.
Not the case.
Justin couldn't find that in the Board of Appeals decision because the Board of Appeals denied the permit and didn't scrutinize. And they showed two.
I just think with the potential of the bike path, which is also a running path and a walking path to limit it to one in and one out is safer. People can pay attention to that.
People don't pay attention anyhow. You think they're going to pay attention to that?
No, but I think, you know, I I think if that's narrowed down, I think it doesn't still want to make it good, but I think if it's narrowed down proper access. When and if the bike trail goes through bike path sidewalk. If a car is coming out that entrance and a car is coming in that entrance, it is possible bike on the other side of that car coming in and not be seen if they're just coming in this. It may take
Jerry, he
in those first eight parking spaces, thirty seconds longer to go around the building.
Yeah, but Jerry, he's knocked it down ten feet already. You know that from when he got rid of the the drive through. To knock it down even further and reduce that curb cut, that's pretty draconian. Because if you got to bring fire apparatus and any other big ass vehicle in there, you want as much room as possible.
You don't have to back down. You just make it one way.
Saying to make the curb cut smaller.
No, just make it one way.
Nah. It'll be used both ways, even if you post it.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Not if they have their police detail.
Well, shame on us then. Yeah, the police detail will take care of that.
No, they don't enforce that.
Like it's vocals.
I'm not keen on changing the traffic flow with that property in my mind. I mean, it's worked for forty years. Yes, it's tight a little bit, but he's got the adequate parking. I don't know what the implications are of mandating it one way. That could screw stuff up.
What's it going to screw up? Tell me.
People who have used it for forty years aren't going to do that. They're going to turn around, go out the way they came. That's the way it is.
Who used it as a bank for forty years are not the same people that are going to use it to buy pot. It's a different population. It's a different population. There's no history here. We have no history of people having a pot shop.
Right.
You don't know who's going to use it.
I've been there almost every day for a year or longer uh, watching the traffic. Your biggest problem if, in my opinion, is that people don't know to turn right on red, leaving Main Street onto Route Six.
Oh, at the at the intersection.
Yeah.
Other than that, there's really no issue.
We get that that's a problem.
I mean, people are going slow. They're coming off of a protected turn.
It's two lanes going into one lane. It's there's lots of issues there.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
Also, you got better sight lines.
Add to that, though.
Yeah. You're begging them go out and exit that has the worst sight lines. Give them the option of taking the one with a better sight lines. Don't make it one way.
Okay, so how about if you go in at the exit and come out where it's two ways?
Oh, now you're really going to confuse people.
Now they're going by the building.
Yeah, they're going by the building. Yeah, that's it. Missing.
That's right. You can have lots of signage.
Okay, let's 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 hold this one for just a moment. Is there anything else? I think we know. I think we all the members of the planning board have an idea of where each one is is going to make a recommendation at this point. Is there anything else that members feel on how the parking is shown and everything else needs identification for the Board of Appeals?
Assuming they can count, I guess that's all we need to have.
Well.
I got a quick question. Um, Zach, well, you've got proposed the piping flow separate permit required. What is that?
So I have applied to the ZBA with two separate permits, and this is just one of them. The other one is for a um, for a sign facing Route Six where the old sign used to be. And I'm asking for a variance on the size of that sign because the current bylaws within the central district are certain square footage, but we're really on Route Six. So it's just clarifying the intention of that bylaw.
Oh, really? You're not really on Route Six. Your entrance is on Main Street.
I have, uh, well, that sign would be facing Route Six.
But I'll give you
Frontage on Route Six.
Beth is perfectly perfectly right. Unfortunately, that sign's been down for two years. It's no longer a preexisting.
No, I know, and that's why I'm asking. That's why I put them in specifically, put them in separate um, requests because if that's not
Request for a variance.
Yeah, and if that's denied, then then that's denied. Or or I
The zoning bylaw is specific now and says that if your access is not on Route Six, your signage is to be on the district or the access of of the signage.
Right.
Where your access is.
I'm just asking. That's it's just a request.
Right.
Fair enough.
Anything? Okay, so board members. This is again feels for input on the site plan. on the site plan. If someone wants to make a motion on access and egress suggestions.
I'll make a motion, but I invite you to correct me because I'm not exactly.
I will help you.
So I would move that egresses be reduced to one egress and one access.
How about?
Availability road. What's the word I want?
How about?
One egress and one access to the facility on Main Street. Not two egresses and one access.
Okay, how about a suggestion before we get that seconded? How about that one access at the south as shown at the southeast corner remain and that only one egress be allowed at the southwest corner of Main Street.
Yeah. That's my motion.
And that a entrance-only sign be posted somewhere.
Well, how about just that both access and egress be properly marked?
That's fine.
Signage.
That's fine. I think there's enough room where the number two is labeled on that handicap location.
Yep.
I think between the edge of that parking area, which is nicely done, by the way, and the main, at Main Street, there's probably only about five feet there, but that would be a good location for entrance only. And the exit could be placed, no exit could be placed someplace else, but I think that's the.
Well, that's the motion.
That's the motion. Any second.
I'll second.
Now we have discussion.
I'm gonna have to play that back like seven times before I get the motion recorded correctly.
Yeah.
You want me to replace it? We, you want her, Beth, or you want me to?
Nope, that's what the recording is for. I can stop and pause all the time.
Okay.
Thank you for your work, Jerry.
So it's open for discussion.
Well, I'm certainly not in favor in changing that, nor do I think that signs does jack shit. There's a couple of people don't read anyhow, and I don't want more signs up in Wellfleet for people to ignore because that's foolish. And it's worked that way for 40 years, and I don't think we're that brilliant that we can reinvent the traffic pattern.
But David, you're gonna have to have signs anyway. There's gonna have to be signs.
Oh, piss on the signs. He's gonna put up minimal signs. You're adding signs. I'm tired of more signs. That's all the junk we put up is more signs that people ignore. It does absolutely nothing.
I don't think it's an addition of signs. I think the signs have existed.
You want him to add more? One way, two ways, three ways, five ways. No, that's pointless.
One entry, one exit, as opposed to three signs.
Remember, this is solely a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. They can take this during the application and they can put in the.
Do what they want.
Do what they want.
Exactly. All this is, is saying we suggest that a single access and a single egress be, be approved. That's, that's what the motion is. All right, we know, and we're all.
You know my opinion.
You know mine.
We're all in this together. We know David's opinion.
And you know mine.
Any other opinions?
Zachary, aren't you really glad you came on to this meeting?
Yeah. It's nice to meet you all. Is this appropriate? Is it appropriate for me to have an opinion, or is this for the board to discuss?
Yes, I want to hear it.
No, it's not appropriate.
Okay.
No.
It's a property owner.
It's point Zachary, it's really not because it's a motion that's kind of closed. Um, yours would be.
I think you know my opinion, so.
Right, and so it's up to you before the Board of Appeals to convince them otherwise.
Well, to support whatever we come up with because we have a board.
Whatever we came up with. I mean, I think that, I think that you know, with fire department going in there, that that is the only way they're easily, easily gonna get in there. Consequently, they don't really want to, they don't need to see traffic coming out of that access either. So I think the fire department probably would, would probably welcome that. So if there's no.
I disagree with that, Jerry, but anyhow.
I know, you strongly do.
Yeah.
So if there's no more or nothing new on the discussion, there is a motion and seconded. Unless there's any other members that want something new, are we ready for the vote? Send a letter to the Board of Appeals with this recommendation and this recommendation only.
Yes.
Yes.
Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye, aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. One.
Jerry, you didn't vote.
I did.
Oh, sorry, I missed it.
Uh, one, two, three, four, four to one. Yeah, because we're missing two. Okay, good. Um, good luck to you at Board of Appeals.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all your time.
Not a problem. Um, before I forget, great, great work on that building. I mean, it really. It really does.
It looks great.
Yeah.
Making appearance.
It does.
Thank you so much.
You should have kept the drive-up window for drive-through.
I thought Wellfleet didn't like drive-ins. That's the first thing we took out.
I know.
Knowing the, the history of the zoning board, I thought that wasn't wise, but now.
I think that was a wise move, to tell you the truth.
Oh, no way.
With COVID.
Perfect.
COVID, it makes sense, but.
Yeah.
COVID won't be here when.
Hot shop with a drive-through, that's perfect.
Yeah, we didn't plan for COVID. All right, moving on.
All right, take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zachary.
Uh, zoning bylaw definitions. Rebecca, did you ever send out, or did I miss it?
I think we never got an electronic copy of it.
Yeah, did you send out the, the zoning bylaw that Paul sent over from Dennis?
I did not. You know what? I asked him for it and I don't know if he sent it to me.
We don't have.
I know he sent it to you.
Okay. I don't see it, but that doesn't mean I didn't get it.
Well, I, I don't know that for a fact because the one I've got right now is, is basically from Paul to me.
Okay, let me check, and if so, I'll just screen share it for you.
You.
What is it, Jerry? 2.1?
You want me to forward it to you?
Well, this, that, that.
All right, what, what I did.
I got it. Hold on one second.
Yeah, I, I sent an email in the afternoon asking to get it electronically because I had so many papers. Yeah. But I think I, I sent that too late.
You did.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So while she's looking for, what, what basically I did with the numerous conversations I had with Paul on, on lot clearing, um, I asked him specifically, coming from Dennis, did they have anything on lot clearing? And he said yes. And he said it's worked pretty well, and they didn't have any serious problems. And if you like, it's only.
Here it comes.
There you go.
It's only a paragraph.
Only a paragraph. Everybody see it?
Do you need it to be a little bigger?
No, I.
No, no, it's good.
All right, David, you can't see it. Okay.
Nope.
David, it goes, "No construction or site preparation work shall be done on any land, including the removal of living trees of greater than four-inch caliber measured six inches above grade or removal of greater than 10% of existing vegetation until all necessary permits and approvals have been obtained. This section shall not prohibit site work reasonably necessary for conducting land survey or test required as conditions precedent to the issuance of any permits or approvals. If any, if after obtaining all necessary permits and approvals, such work is commenced and then abandoned, all areas of the site which were disturbed during construction or site preparation shall be re-vegetated in a manner sufficient to avoid erosion."
According to whom?
This is according to whom?
Yeah.
You mean according, who's the governing agent?
Yeah.
Building inspector.
Okay.
What I did is after the, in the third line, after it reads, "No greater than 10% of existing vegetation until a lot clearing permit from the building department is obtained and all other necessary."
Oh, that's much better.
Permits and approvals have been obtained.
That's much better.
What I'm, what I'm suggesting to the board members, I have not cleared this through Paul yet, but to the board members, this kind of was saying, okay, if you've got other permits, you've got to follow them, but what if something's got somebody by right? Which we're having on a particular situation right now. At least this would be, this would be creating a definition of lot clearing or creating a lot clearing permit at the board of a building inspector's office. So no matter what, even if no other permits are required, at least they have to pull a lot clearing permit. Now, this bylaw is going to change the way residential lots are cleared. Many times they clear lots and, and that's the end of the conversation, and then they build a house. I think Paul was saying that, okay, once they submit a building permit, they've got to submit the building permit before they go in and start clearing or get a lot clearing permit to clear, but at least he knows what's being done. So it's a step in the right direction. This seemed the simplest one. I'm sure there's other towns that have got one, that have one out there, but I don't know what the board members think.
Um, could I ask a question?
Of course you can.
Yeah, so, um, the, I, so we're, we're still kind of talking about whether a new bylaw is necessary. And so in the cease and desist order um, had cited the two bylaws that had been violated. And so, uh, by proceeding without, without permits. And Old Wharf Road is also a scenic road, so there is a scenic roads bylaw that completely, and, and many, many other roads. Actually, there's this very, very long list of scenic roads in Wellfleet. So there's also a bylaw that prohibits, you know, clearing or ta, uh, taking vegetation without permits for the scenic roads in Wellfleet. So I guess.
Funny, funny, that would not have changed anything in this instance, number one. And number two, the scenic road state regulation is only for the layout of that, of that road.
Ah.
So if anybody takes trees right now by not having to go for a special permit, but by right on their property,
Uh huh.
don't touch a tree on a scenic road that is laid out, then fine.
I see.
So Old Wharf Road, and I'll just talk about Old Wharf Road, Old Wharf Road layout was never touched. Now, there is a bylaw that says on Route 6, there's something else that kicks in.
You think that's important?
We have instances where we have areas and zones where vegetation must be maintained on setbacks, like in the Central District. We have districts that that does apply to. So just because you see in the stop order does not necessarily mean that was all that was found. That was enough for the stop order.
I see.
Okay, but no, if, if someone clears trees within the layout of a scenic road or takes down a stone wall, now they've got a problem. They have to go for a curb cut first because most scenic roads, if not all scenic roads, are town roads.
Yeah.
That wasn't the case here.
Okay.
So this bylaw doesn't, adding of this bylaw is, is assuming that all tree cutting and existing vegetation would be limited to the lot.
Right, okay.
Okay.
The way that reads, Jerry, the way you're proposing it.
Yes.
So anything over a four-inch caliber you need a permit for?
If it's more than 10%.
Percent.
No, is it, I, what's the language say? Is it anything?
David's got it.
It's an or. It should be, because it's or.
No, 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 it should not be an or. David, let me reread it. "No construction or site preparation work shall be done on any land, including the removal of living trees of greater than four inches caliber measured six inches above grade or the removal." So it's saying that no work shall be done on land, including removal of trees above grade or the remove, or the removal
Yeah, so, so it's.
So it's both.
Trees four inches caliber and six inches high or 10% of existing vegetation, whatever size. So it's both.
No, I'm not comfortable with that.
So I don't like this at all. So let, so an example, I removed 13 trees, all of which were at least four inches in caliber, all of which were more than six inches above grade level. They were all sick and, and dying. And so 13 trees, I would have to have 130 trees on my property for that to be less than 10%.
But would that be considered a living tree if it was sick?
No.
It's living.
Okay.
But there again, you, I got living trees that pose hazards, a falling risk. It's like, do I gotta go get a permit to whack that? It's like, do I gotta go get a permit to whack that? I mean, that's kind of stupid, you know? So not really thrilled with it, but I would have to read that. I don't want to vote on it tonight anyhow, so I'd like to see the hard copy and digest it.
Yeah, and just like I did, David.
I'll send it to everyone right now.
Right, I, I.
It seems there needs to be more caveats than just testing.
Yeah.
The what, I'm sorry?
The only caveat there is, is for testing or surveying, there needs to be more caveats than that.
Yes.
Procedural question. Is this a bylaw or a definition that we're talking about? And where would it go if it's a bylaw?
Well, all definitions go into the zoning bylaws.
Under 2.1, we'd have something for lot clearing? Or what are we, what are you proposing in this discussion?
Well, I'm not proposing anything. I'm just saying that this is, this is a proposed zoning bylaw to prevent lot stripping.
Okay.
I would check with town council, but I think town council would come back and say that you would put in definitions, lot clearing. You could put this as a definition. And then in the use table, you would put where, in which district this applies to.
Okay.
The National Seashore has something very similar to this bylaw in the National Seashore. In our zoning bylaws. If you're in the National Seashore, I don't think you can take down trees four inches in diameter or greater without seashore approval. Now, is anybody really?
Welcome to the repressed minority.
So in Provincetown, that's the case for any tree, doesn't matter how, what percentage of your lot it is.
And I think when you're looking at this, I think to Beth's point and to David's point, you've, we've got to look at, all right, this is the initial, you, this says, if you're going to clear your lot, you need to notify the building inspector and give him an idea of what you're doing. And why you're going to take down 10 trees, eight inches in diameter, and the reason for it. You're going to build a tennis court, you're going to build a pool, you're going to build a storage shed. You're going to pull a permit for all of them. So consequently, okay, now at least when, when he gets a phone call and the neighbors are up in arms because something is happening, he's got, he's proactive instead of being on the, having to react, he's proactive to say, okay, I looked at the plan. I checked the zoning bylaws, everything is okay, and it's reasonable.
Jerry, weigh in on that.
Wait a minute, is it more restrictive than we have at the present time? Yes, without a doubt. Without a doubt. It's just a matter of things happen and we have to look at them and say, okay, is it time to reanalyze? And that's all we're doing with this is reanalyze. We may say, okay, it only applies to the commercial district. You may say it only applies to the central district. You may say that, okay, there's a 35 foot buffer or 30 foot buffer. Anything on the inside of that is okay. Like example, I setbacks in the residential area, 30 front and rear, 25 sideline. You may say, hey, you're going to deal something in those, in that 25 or 30 setback? This bylaw applies. I, I don't have the answer. All I'm doing is throwing it out to you. Discussion number one and consideration number two.
Well, I, I want to just reiterate what David said is I, I need time to digest this.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm not, I'm not even suggesting that we vote to advertise it because it needs, it needs work. This is literally the first step.
Are there others on Cape?
I'm sure Beth, if you, if.
I know Provincetown is different. It's any tree, any size, you need permission.
Exactly.
But.
I'm sure if you were to, yeah, this was handy for a reason that Paul had one because he just came from a town that had one in record.
And do you know why that one got adopted?
No, I really don't, David.
You know that by the movie theaters there, you know, the movie theaters in Dennis?
Yes.
You know the lot across the street?
Yeah, it was a car dealer.
Forty Acres?
Yeah.
They cut, they cut the whole thing ahead of the Cape Cod, you know, ahead of the commission coming in and before there's any regulation. And that's what precipitated it because they field stripped the whole lot. And it was like, I don't know, 20 acres or something. And it outraged people so much, they had to put the bylaw in.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying anything, David, but I'm seeing, you know, sometimes that's what happens.
Well, that's what happened, yeah.
What happens, so, you know, it's.
Well, the same thing happened in Provincetown. They cleared the, the trees in, in the, in the center between Route Six going east and Route Six going west, and they cleared it all. And then they put in a bylaw saying you can't cut a tree more than four inches in diameter anywhere.
So review it, think about it. If you want to go online and look to see what Carwich or Barnstable or Chatham or anybody else has, go for it. And if you decide at the next meeting that the majority feels that they don't need it, then we'll go by what we do. But I'm just, I'm just bringing it up to the board to say, okay, fine. We've had a problem and we can either move forward or we don't move forward. It's up to you guys, okay?
Great.
All right. ADU, AADU.
So.
I have confirmed.
Are, are, where are we on the agenda? Are we doing the definition, the zoning bylaw definitions first?
That was, that was zoning because we couldn't, we couldn't discuss it without that. David, did you want to table that other thing?
Yes, I did. I'll make the motion to kick that specific article down the pike a little further as we address more subjects.
Okay. That's what I should have taken for zoning and then taken the ADU and then lot clearing. I am sorry. So for you.
It's all right, you covered it all.
Yeah, all right.
Lot clearing is related to that.
Yeah.
Correct, it was, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think you covered it, yeah.
ADU, AADU. Aldi, you had a couple of questions on deed restriction.
Some legal questions. What is a, I think it was included in the packet. One was, what does recorded restriction mean?
Recorded restriction is the certificate of determination from the Board of Appeals for, in this, you know, since we're talking about it, applicant goes to the Board of Appeals for an AADU. The Board of Appeals finds in favor of granting the permit. They record a deed restriction on record with the findings of fact as to that it's been approved and it runs with the land.
In perpetuity?
Yes.
I think that's wrong. I don't think that's the case.
No, it is, special permit.
Why don't you think it's the case?
Well, if someone does not use their AADU as an affordable unit, they stop renting it.
Still, there's no restriction on until, until the board didn't.
No violation.
It's a violation.
The restriction's still there.
They can, they, they can, if they choose to stop renting it, take out the stove, call the building inspector. He comes in and inspects that the stove has been removed. It is now meets the rest of town of Wealth zoning.
Right.
They request that the Board of Appeals rescind the deed restriction.
Special permit.
Special permit, which they do, and it gets recorded. But once a special permit goes on record, it's there forever until the Board of Appeals authorizes it's taking, being taken off, deed restriction. It's unlike a covenant that's put on record, which expires after 30 years with no time. Deed restrictions, deed restriction with a special permit.
Okay.
Okay. Now you have another question.
So can I ask a question? So if that would mean that in the current draft, that any new accessory dwelling unit would, would be year round and would have a permanent deed restriction on it that, that limits it to year round use or rental, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we know what we're voting on.
Aldo, you had, I think there were two other items.
The second one, which everyone should have in their packet. You had said a number of times, something about a bylaw cannot limit ownership, types of ownership. And I just thought, you keep saying, you've said it a number of times, and I thought, oh, I want to know if that's true. And, you know, whether the AADU cannot say you can't have a condo later, you can't divide your property. What have you found?
Well, I know for a fact you cannot zone against ownership. That's why we had to rescind the condominium by law on Cottage Colonies going for a special permit because it's by right. You can condo anything. You can tell anything. The question to town council would be if a special permit requires.
Supers, supersedes condo law. Yeah. Whether a special permit supersedes condo law.
Right. And in, in the case.
I don't know.
In the case of Cottage Colony, and I will have to, I, you know, I know when I can answer the question, Aldo, I will answer. When I don't have the answer, I will not attempt to answer it. I can tell you when the town of Wellfleet passed the original Cottage Colonies into condominium form, form of ownership. We made that conversion by special permit and said, you cannot convert to a cottage colony condominium, cottage colony to a condominium form of ownership without a special permit. That's what we said. It was illegal because the state had said you cannot govern ownership. So we finally had to clear that up, clean it up, and rescind it. So a cottage colony today, if they choose to go condominium, simply would have to upgrade to Title V. If any construction was going on, get a permit, but otherwise they could sell those units as individual condominium. I have noticed that in the new ADU, as well as our AADU that we did, we stated that. Now, no one has ever taken us to court on it. And we have not asked the question of town council. Is that just a stipulation that Board of Appeals are putting on it by special permit, but has no legal standard? That question has not been answered yet, asked yet.
Okay, so I'm asking it. Yeah, we keep putting it, you know, we saw it in the AADU, so we put it in the ADU proposed bylaw, so.
Right, okay.
All right.
And was there a?
Jerry, the short answer.
Get an answer.
Yeah, David?
Jerry, I think the short answer to that one could be that although the town of Wellfleet with the colonies or whatever it was, they couldn't restrict the form of ownership. However, the board could restrict its use to seasonal. And I would suggest that this is parallel, is they couldn't suggest, they couldn't restrict its ownership, but it might be restricted to year round rental.
Right.
That's possible.
Yeah, that's a dual question. I mean, some, I've seen some of these towns that have passed the ADU have put in there that it can't be sold as a con, it can't be sold. But.
Hasn't been challenged.
Hasn't been challenged.
Yep. Well, big money's coming to town, so.
Exactly. All right, so let me get back to my final email back and forth with town council at 4:30 this afternoon. Town council has finally gotten back to me and confirmed that David, as well as my reading and the building inspector, that the definition of new construction in Title V is specific that new construction is the adding of any dwelling or dwelling unit that requires an occupancy permit. And that must be brought up and conformed to Title V without variance and cannot be a non-compliant system. And as I described before, if you have a property that is 20,000 square feet and you have a three bedroom septic system in the ground and your well fails or your Title V fails and you need to move it and you can't get 100 feet apart, that you are protected under that same Title V regulations passed in 1995, you can separate those two to the best of your ability, not lose any bedrooms, but the system becomes non-compliant. It is, it is allowed. And if you're doing major renovation on a pre-existing house that has non-compliant system or it burns down, you're okay. But new construction is in fact anything as far as a new dwelling on the property and must meet Title V. So we didn't get into ramifications of all of the ADUs that, ADUs that are there that aren't following that regulation. That wasn't my question to town council, what to do. Question with town council was basically moving forward with this ADU, AADU situation. Where are we standing with upgrading of septic systems? And is it, does it fall under the state regulations that non-compliant systems cannot add a multifamily or second dwelling to the property that requires a use in occupancy? I think it extends all the way to something within the building as well, because if you take a single family house and have three bedrooms. single-family house and have three bedrooms and take a bedroom out and add a kitchen, you now have to pull a building permit and you're going to get inspected because you've changed Title V and you've changed it from a single-family, a multifamily dwelling that triggers compliance with the current Title V regulations.
That's a big one to get over.
It's a huge one. And it's a variance under new construction and under new construction.
You have a variant.
Section fifteen, four-ten. And I don't believe I can even quote this. Section fifteen four-ten-two says that new construction may be granted a variance. However, they must show that they cannot have without the variance, they cannot have any beneficial improvement to the property. So basically, you've got to be looking at a vacant lot that if they don't grant the variance, they can't do anything with it, they might be able to grant a variance. But if you've got a single-family house on a single-family lot and you want to add a second dwelling, there is almost no way in hell that you're going to show that it's a beneficial loss.
Yeah.
So.
They don't have the authority to grant that because it's maximum feasible compliance, which they can allow the variances under, but not under new construction.
Yeah. So that's where I left that aspect of it.
The, you had said it might be spot zoning and therefore you can't even go this direction and put in ADU by law.
Without hypothetical.
I think basically it may on the surface appear to be spot zoning. However, I did discuss it with Town Council. And we both and she'll, she'll probably put it running, but we both came up with the same thought process that, no, it wouldn't be spot zoning. That basically if we allowed it in the residential area, in the central district, in the commercial, it can't be allowed in the, in the national seashore because two families are not allowed in the national seashore.
There's enough sample size that it wouldn't restrict it, you know?
Right.
It's not like it's eligible for ten lots. It's available or, you know, for at least fifty percent of the lots in Wealthly.
And you have some town, and you have some town water areas.
That it might be eligible, yep.
That it might be eligible. So no, to answer the question directly, Olga, I don't think there would be a problem with spot zoning.
So we delayed discussing ADU for this Town Council decision.
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. Um, I had a fourth concern, and that was whether the affordable housing tax exemption makes the AADU unnecessary.
And I didn't understand that question, the postal, the, the, the state deduction is completely separate from our bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
So if you have an AADU that is, I'm sorry.
If you have a affordable.
Go ahead.
Affordable unit.
There you go, thank you very much. You have an affordable, if you have a legal.
Affordable housing, yeah.
For, no, take the word affordable.
Okay.
If you have a legal multifamily dwelling and you want to get a tax exempt on that, on those units, because you want to take one of those units, let's say it's a three-unit, and you want to take one of the units and you want to apply for a tax, because you're going to rent it to a affordable, under the Affordable Regulation. You don't have to go for a special permit for an AADU because you already have an existing apartment, you're just going to charge the going rate under that program and you would get the taxes exemption. And we have one of those already in town. Three-family, getting a tax deduction because all three are rented on the Affordable Schedule, they get the tax deduction. They didn't have to go to the Board of Appeals for a special permit for an AADU because they weren't creating an AADU, they already had pre-existing apartments. They just chose to rent those affordable.
Yeah. So if we develop and approve an ADU by law, would we be able to eliminate the AADU part of it because this tax exemption exists with the special legislation?
Well.
Very good question.
Good question, but it's, 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 I, I guess it's, it's a question that I'm wrestling with now on my own based on this information that seems to have reared its head. You know, I can't speak for other, and we discussed this before, I can't speak for other towns, but it appears that other towns have been able to pass this bylaw either either looking the other way, not asking the question, or having town water or town sewage where it's not.
That's a game changer.
For example, Bru- for example, Eastham. Eastham now, to the best of my knowledge, has town water everywhere in the town of Eastham. So they could easily pass a, 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 I'm sorry, an ADU by law because they don't have to worry about being a hundred feet away from a septic and well. They could put in a septic system with as many bedrooms as they want unless they have passed something else. Wealthly can't do. So have most of these towns that have passed an ADU put it in zones where they have town water and not had to worry about it? These are the things that weren't brought to the equation. All I know is, is asking the question. We now have a problem with most all of. And I got, I'm going to be, I'm going to be generous and not say all, but I, I think with, with most of the approval of the ADUs that have been approved by special permit were legally approved by the Board of Appeals. No questions asked. However, they may have not had to follow the Title V regulations. Which now, I'm sorry, David, what?
Not much.
Which, which, okay, I didn't know if you wanted to say it, which now seems to be a problem. And so now, when we're talking about continuing with AADUs and creating new units and ADUs creating new dwelling units in the town of Wealthly, where the majority of the town of Wealthly is pre-existing, non-conforming lots, what are we really doing? Because it's not going to satisfy the problem. We do have, and that's not to, for a better word, extrapolate the fact that we do have some areas in the town of Wealthly that have town water that could do an AA, uh, ADU or an AADU which is still on the books. Which could do that. The caveat I'm going to add to that in my own mind is, okay, a lot of those areas that have town water have already shown they have town water problems and are on really small lots. Do we really want to add more congestion in those areas? And I'm struggling with that because I don't think I, I do, but I'm struggling with it. I haven't had time to think about it with everything else we're doing here, but those are the problems that just came up with confirmation from Town Council at about three-thirty, four o'clock this afternoon. She confirmed after we had numerous back and forth that, yeah, it, that's the way it reads.
Where do we go?
Yeah.
I'm looking to you, I mean, I'm, I'm, that's to the, again, that's to the best of my knowledge. I quite frankly don't. It concerns me that number one, we didn't catch it when we did the AADU.
But Jerry also.
Yeah, David? Nope, go ahead.
This, unfortunately, this is why when we're proposing these forty-seven units on whatever road, Lawrence Road, this is why it takes four years and septic systems and onsite treatment facilities, because they have to address all these issues. So, yeah, that sounds like a long time, but they're in the planning stage, so they don't have problems. And that's why we can't just go with a stroke of a pen and go, oh, we can ignore these laws. It's like, no, we can't, you know? So that's why that whole project's taking a while because it's a complex not to fit that many units up there. So. It's unfortunate, but that's the way it is.
And that's what I, I guess is, is being on the planning board as long as I have. Some people accuse us of moving slower than we should, but it's sometimes, at least it has proven to me, the movement that we have moves we made in the past have, have been thought out, looked into extremely carefully. And you hate to make mistakes and unless something changed drastically, if we, if we proceeded with writing a bylaw for basically just those properties around town, I mean, we don't, we can't say that because that, now we get into spot zoning, but say, you know, basically we're looking at properties that have acres plus, which they don't need to build an affordable dwelling today, but they have the money for, maybe for a quarter of a million dollars, the way construction costs are going today. But the only ones that could really do it, they'd have to upgrade their septic systems are those on town water. Either myself or another member of the planning board would have to explain this on town meeting floor and how restrictive it is and how, and the problems we have. You just can't sweep it under the carpet. I certainly couldn't in, in presenting it to the town. It's saying, hey, we've got, we've got units out there now that didn't follow. We, we just can't compound it. It even makes all those illegal units that aren't even on the books with the permits in a worse situation because they didn't even get permits and they're violating the system. So I don't have an answer, Beth, as to at this particular moment in time, but I, I know at least my personal viewpoint, as much as I dislike it at the moment. I, I'm not too sure I'm ready to move forward, but I'll move forward as the chair if, if the majority of this board wants to proceed with it. Because that's, that's what I need to do, but I'm, I'm thinking right now this is a whole new light and it's really very, very specific in nature and is, is this information enough to really not even have a chance of getting something of this nature passed on town meeting floor? Because we do have to look at our water table, we do have to look at a lot of that kind of stuff that isn't going to get town water and you put a bylaw on the books, is it, is it going to be going to be taken advantage of, or is it, is it going to create more problems than what we want to do? I don't have the answer. People, I really don't.
If it goes forward as a citizen petition, what, you know, and gets voted in, approved, what happens then? We still have poor enforcement?
No, because anybody who goes and applies is going to get shot down, so it'd be a stupid thing to do that.
Well, I think.
They haven't been, I guess.
Because we just came up with this.
Well, who's going to know?
Well.
I think that's the problem. People illegally without going through any process and call it whatever they want to call it, but, um, they don't call it what it is, an ADU. They call it something else.
Well, whatever they, whatever they call it, it, it the application as a, as a new dwelling unit on the Title V just wasn't probably caught. But to answer your question directly, Olga, the process would be, as I mentioned at a previous meeting, what is, what is done by petition has nothing to do with the planning board.
Right.
Except there is an exception. Except that that petitioned article would be sent over to the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen would refer it back to the planning board. We would have to advertise it and we would have to have a public meeting. And we would have to make a recommendation as a planning board to town meeting, whether or not we recommend or not recommend the petitioned article. As chair, I would make, it's my job to make the motion on town meeting floor to report when we had the meeting and the results and vote of that meeting. And I would have to say based on the knowledge I have today, unless something else radically changes that I don't know about, I would have to say on town meeting floor, the planning board decided not to do it or do it, whichever we did, if it came from petition that the planning board decided not to do it based on information because it is in conflict with Title V regulations in the town of Wealthly, and we already have problems that we missed in the first place. I would have to say that. I mean, whatever was said after that by individual members of the board or as the petitioners could certainly be said, but I would have to state, and I feel a responsibility, I would have to state why we did what we did and what research we did and make that make the town of Wealthly voters aware of that before they voted without that kind of information.
Grace, you have to, you'd be obligated.
I'm ob- I'm obligated to do that.
Yeah.
But that would be the procedure, Olga. I mean, it's like, okay, if we know about it and we have a problem with it and if it comes by petition and they say, okay, fine, we still want to put it on the books, we would just, we would have to state why we didn't do it. I, I honestly believe that and I would never speak for the affordable housing people and the people moving this, but I would last speak for them, but I, I would ascertain that if they delved into this information further as I did in the building inspector and in town council, that they probably would not want to put it before the town unless they felt convincing that, you know, one or two members, one or two situations on town water was, was worth putting a bylaw on the books. Okay, I, I don't, I don't honestly, in my mind at right this minute, I don't feel with the time and energy to write a combining bylaw that with a minimum amount with septic and waste problems that we have, that it's and with town water is that it's worth that situation. But I'm certainly open to discussions from the board members.
Hey, hey, town water is amazing.
Town water is amazing, yes.
Sixty pounds of pressure, right?
All right, I, I see Elaine has a comment. Is there any other board member before I call on Elaine? Okay, Elaine.
Okay, I just have to ask some naive questions from what you just said.
No problem.
When you talk about when there's new construction, it has to be brought up to Title V.
Yes.
What if the property already has a perfectly fine Title V system? They're not going to increase the bedrooms.
It's, it has to be a non-variant system, and that's the difference. Nine, I'd say eighty percent of the systems in Wealthley, granted, they're legal Title V's and you're protected, but they all come with variances. And that could be just twenty-three different variances you can seek. Most of them have at least one. It can be a simple variance to a setback to the sideline, or it can be a more complicated variance as a, as a distance to the well. But most Title V systems in Wealthley have variances. They allow that through local upgrade under a thing they call maximum feasible compliance. And they have to do that, because otherwise they would render the property loo, loo, uh, useless and it would be considered a taking. However, when you're doing new construction, there can be no variances to either the septic or the well. And the definition that we found is adding a new dwelling or a second dwelling makes it new construction, so the amount of eligible properties is very, very, very small. Does that make sense?
So Elaine, any, any property that has a Title V system that is working, working perfectly, and, and again, let's say it's on a twenty thousand square foot lot and it has three bedrooms. If they wanted to take a bedroom out of that house, put it into a ADU, that requires a use and occupancy permit once it's built. That is called new construction. And the system that is in the ground is a legal Title V non-complying system as of March thirty-first, nineteen ninety-five. They can never take away the three bedrooms. They can grant twenty-three variances, as many as they want. But when they want to do that new dwelling, they have to make it conform to the present Title V regulations without being non-conforming, non-complying, which means they would have to have thirty thousand square feet for those three bedrooms. So all of our fifteen thousand square foot, twenty thousand square foot, twenty-five thousand square foot lots that have these bedrooms, three, four, five bedrooms never can be taken away, but we can't add a dwelling, a dwelling unit to those without them bringing it up to ten thousand square feet per bedroom.
So they need more land, which they don't have, and they can't do that.
This is snowboring.
Isn't, isn't it? Do have enough land?
I'm sorry.
Isn't it possible that some people do have enough land? I guess I'm trying to figure out if it's worth it to have a bylaw for, for those places that are on town water or who have enough land to actually upgrade their system.
Well, what you, that's, that's, that's a point. And that's why I said that if you're on town water, you can do it. You have to bring your septic system up to up to compliance, but you don't, you don't have to get your, your separation between septic and well. But.
Keep in mind, those lots, Jerry, are the forty thousand lot plus. Now.
Oh, those lots. Those lots, David, are the ones on town water that probably are very small, which.
Oh, yeah, they don't have the physical room. Yeah.
You don't have the physical room, number one, because those lots have a fifteen percent lot coverage. And number two, there are already densely populated areas, because that's where we had to bring water in. And is that really where you want to add more units? But to your point, Bonnie, I've done subdivisions, you know, you know, you know, I'm, I've done the development. For example, I'll cite one, great, great pasture. Great pasture is one acre average lot size in that subdivision. Now, most of those are four bedroom, three bedroom and four bedroom house lots. They could do a Title V and they could bring that up and do an affordable or an ADU. They could add a second dwelling unit. Many of those subdivisions have covenants not allowing
That's right.
multifamily dwellers. Most, and with the cost today, I'm seeing quotes on one and two car garages with family rooms above and a bathroom going at a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and it's only six hundred, five hundred square feet. The cost of construction is back up to over three hundred to four hundred and fifty.
Three hundred.
A foot minimum. So to build a one thousand square foot dwelling unit today legally, not only would you upgrade your septic system, it would cost you somewhere in the vicinity of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. The payback isn't there. It's outrageous and getting worse every day. And the more. Zero building, the more we do all those kind of things, um, the more expensive it gets. But no, to answer your question directly, there are some lots that have two, three, four acres that legitimately have the ability to rent year round. But, you know, if I'm going to do that, and I'm not persuading any of you, but if I'm, if I've got a three acre house lot and I can't subdivide it and I want to build an additional unit.
It's going to be a rental legal.
It's going to be a legal unit, number one, or it's going to be a unit, a thousand square feet, and I'm going to build it for my family to live in when they come, because I don't need the income. So. So can it be done? To answer your question, yes, Bonnie, it can be done. Is it likely that those much more expensive lots with million and a quarter houses on, am I going to do this? No. It really kind of lended itself to more reasonable construction in smaller lot areas for added income. And the way things are shaping up, the way that ninety-five Lawrence Road is going is in a town without extensive town water and town surage is the way we need to go to get those affordable units. Based on this information, at least in my mind. Did that help answer your question?
Yeah.
The only exception to that, Jerry, that I can see potentially is building a place, those people with all that money in that property, building something for a caretaker to live in.
Exactly.
As they age and need help.
That's done in the Bahamas generally.
Let's go there.
Could happen here.
And it could, and it could happen here, but is it?
I don't think.
Is that really?
It's not a, a massive quantity of people.
Yeah, and that's a question I, I would really kind of go over to Elaine and Sharon on is, and at least in my mind, that's not where I think either one of them are going, and it's not where I'm going. When I, when I was on the board and, and got AADUs through with the rest of the board members, David included there, that's not where we were going. That's not who we were trying to address. We were trying to address.
Absolutely.
You know, that fireman and that, uh, nurse and, and, and those other families just starting out and, and that's, that's what's making this kind of thing so difficult.
Exactly.
Sharon, you're awful quiet.
I'm just, um, uh, you know, ninety-five Lawrence Road is, is great. And I'm, I'm definitely all for it. But I feel like we're headed towards being a gated community. And I feel like we're headed towards being a single class, um, single race, single age group, community, and that's just boring.
Of course it is. We want Mississippi rednecks living here, god damn it.
No, we don't.
Well, we have you, Dave. That's okay.
But it's not sustainable.
I agree with you, Sharon. I agree with you. Absolutely.
They don't like cold weather.
So I'm, I would love to hear your, um, you know, if you have any creative ideas to help us move forward in any way besides, you know, I mean, obviously ninety-five Lawrence.
Sharon, call me tomorrow. I'll tell you how to do it. I swear to God, I will.
Yeah.
Totally.
You're on.
I'm not kidding you.
Give them a call.
Will it be legal?
I'll tell you exactly how to do it.
Will it be legal?
No, I'm not kidding you. Totally legal.
Okay, it can put, it may push up your blood pressure, but it, it.
No, totally legal. Every book.
If it's totally legal, why can't you describe it in this meeting then?
Yes, tell us now.
I'm not going to tell everybody all at once. I'll tell Sharon. She can spread it around.
All right.
What do you think, I'm a profit monger?
Yeah, let's get back to the question.
Tell me your phone number, Dave.
Uh, I got your email. I'll email it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, because there's too many other people on Zoom here.
Yep.
I think the planning board has been trying with subdivision, subdivision control law, with cluster zoning, with, um, different things on properties to reduce lot size to try and do this kind of thing. I think we have to continue to do that with brainstorming ideas that are legal. We may have to look at the few subdivisions that we have left and, and maybe bonus them even more when they do affordable rental or or house to sell. But I think we, at least in town, where we have an extremely limited amount of town water areas, I think we have to do it through those kind of channels. I don't think we can stop looking at them. I think the cluster bylaw that we just passed is one way. But we may have to sweeten it. Uh, we did one four years ago. No one has used it. We may have to revisit that. When you, when you plan, like Lawrence Road, when you plan from the start for getting affordable either rental or sale units, the place to do it is start in the town of Wealthley to, I believe, start from the beginning of, while it's, while it's land. And get those individuals developing it to get into the mindset of returning part of that for affordable. And I, I think that's where we really probably need to dive into more because of what we just found. Not certainly give up on it. Bonnie?
So, I mean, I want to go back to our original goal, you know, which is increasing year-round rental housing in Wealthley, which is, you know, I mean, so is there a way that we could offer incentives for people who are currently renting so whatever they have, you know, seasonally, to converting it to year-round? I mean, is, have, I have the housing group talked about some other scheme that doesn't involve it. Apparently, if I understand all this correctly, the, the problem comes up with the regulations surrounding new construction, the septic regulations surrounding new construction. And so even the can, even if the footprint of your house doesn't change and it's just, you know, retrofitting your basement so that it's a studio apartment, that still triggers the septic problems. I'm like, am I understanding this correctly?
Correct.
Yeah, so, so is there another way that doesn't involve new construction? You know, where we could, I mean, maybe it's not the planning, it's not the planning board's place, I guess, to do that, except that it's our place to propose new zoning bylaws. So, I mean, is it, is there a way to, just as there is a, an incentive for doing affordable units, is there a way to add on an incentive to provide year-round rental?
Olga.
Well, Province Town has expanded residential tax exemption. And that's the tax exemption that residents get is open to non-residents if they rent year-round. So there's one direction and it's, uh, it's something that's a special legislation. And I believe Brian Curly is probably going to be proposing this. So that's an incentive.
It's, it's an answer what I think, Bonnie, because I'll dwell on my experience as a real estate broker for forty years in the town of Wealthley. So many people came to Wealthley without or with the need of buying, wanting to buy real estate, wanting to have a summer house with the idea that they would rent in July and August and they would use it off-season. Substantial income, and as we've seen with, on years as we go on, and we'll get better after we get over COVID, we now are seeing two things happen, which is, is even making this more difficult. We're seeing an influx of individuals being able to work from home. They have summer houses, which, which were built relatively, it was built after nineteen eighty, for all intent and purposes, a well-insulated, well-built, year-round homes, even though they're only seasonal. They're now being used by an awful lot of people coming out of the cities and living here and working here from their home. That's taken a number of properties off the rental market, therefore causing the rental market prices to go up because you have left houses in the summertime, so the rental incomes are going up. More Wealthley is being hit with more year-round people. We see more mailboxes going up every, every single day. We see more lights on at night. That may change in three years when things open up again, but still, when you get people used to working from their house and corporations used to working and realizing how much money they make when they're working from their houses, that, that's going to put a strain on the number of units that are rented and therefore they're going to get more expensive. Those individuals who are still using them as seasonal aren't looking for a fourteen, fifteen hundred dollar a month rental on a twelve-month season when they can get twenty-four to three thousand a week for ten weeks. So when they rent for ten weeks at three thousand dollars a week, that's thirty thousand dollars worth of income. When they rent on a year-round basis at fifteen hundred, they're looking at about twenty thousand dollars. It's just not going to happen. So, yeah, you might pick up one with a good incentive for the tax, as Olga said, as a real good tax that they're earning. But what we're seeing with COVID and what we're seeing with, and I call it the field of dreams, when you build it, they will come. And when we made Wealthley as attractive as we have made it, and that's everybody. and that's everybody that lives in the town of Wellfleet. That's those of us on the planning board, that's the board of the people that are on the fuels board and the conservation. And it's, it's the voters that vote these things in. We've made Wellfleet such a beautiful place to come to with National Seashore and everything else. We're bringing in those individuals at the higher-ups. I mean, I've, I've been in construction for so long and yet I go up streets every single day now and I see stuff that just blows my mind as to what's being built. They're not hesitating to build three, five hundred, six hundred dollar square foot houses in places that we would never build them. Money is not an object because they're taking it out of markets. So Wellfleet is going, and I don't mean to, don't mean to make it more upsetting to the affordable housing industry, but it's going to become much more difficult for those people in the town of Wellfleet that need to find a rental to live in Wellfleet, the way the prices are going and with the way the individuals are moving in today. It's getting much more difficult and it's not going to get cheaper and it's not going to get easier. It really isn't. I mean, Main Street, Commercial Street has never looked so good as it has today. And, you know, so I think your idea means well, but I think the practicality speaking is probably not going to happen. I think we've really got to look at it from a point of view of zoning and starting from scratch from land development and really seeing what we could do from that point of view is my gut.
Or we go with the trial plan. Jerry knows it. He's not ready to divulge it yet.
Forget it, people. It's David, it's David and I being David. It's truly something that is going to take a major work in progress to try and get over. Quite frankly, I think we're lucky as can be that Wellfleet still had the land available for ninety-five Lawrence Street to happen. Because without that, we wouldn't have whatever units we pick up. And so that's, you know, unless we get together, I mean, maybe, and this is beyond us as a planning board, well, maybe it's not, maybe we can make recommendations to the selectmen. But maybe it's time, instead of just giving away land that we have, maybe it's time to stop buying some of these tracts of land.
We're talking about
ponying up the money for everybody in the town of Wellfleet to contribute and do affordable on that in that way. We haven't, Wellfleet's never looked, and I, and I know the call from everybody is, we've got to keep the taxes in Wellfleet low. We've got to keep the taxes in Wellfleet low. Yeah, we enjoy low taxes on our real estate. But, you know, we're not making any more of the land and the seashore is seventy percent. When something comes up, maybe Wellfleet's got to step up and buy it.
Jerry.
Totally agree.
You know, what we need to do, we need to get that airstrip lot and put in a ninety-unit subdivision with a gaming casino. Because that would, that'll handle it. And it's got a beach, its own private beach. I'm not kidding. We have low-income housing with its own private beach.
We do need to work on that, David, just from a point of view of getting those acres available to trade off of the National Seashore for something. So we
And we're going to get the water tower, too. We're taking that.
But I think, you know, there's one aspect that maybe the planning board looks and makes some recommendations. And I'm sure, and again, I won't speak for Elaine or Sharon, but, you know, I'm sure if we came up with something that, you know, I know
Forty acres there. They could have ten acres. They'd have a lot of units, and it's got water right next door.
And I know, for example, I mean, I don't like to throw stones, but I know when the planning board, three years ago, suggested that the town buy for five hundred thousand dollars the lot behind the Congo Church.
That's right. Which lot?
Where the farmer's market is. We recommended to the town of Wellfleet that they buy it to the selectmen. They didn't do a damn thing about it.
But you mean behind the congregational church?
There was a number of units there on affordable housing that could have been put up. There are lots of land that Halls is another one. Halls came up and it's like, okay, fine, you got to bite the bullet. I mean, we complained about blashes and it could have been bought for two grand. Well, if they bought it for two grand, Blash wouldn't be there. Everybody would have paid some taxes, but we would have owned it. So maybe it's time that we, as an entire town, have to look at it and say, okay, we're going to have to pony up some taxes, but that is one of the only ways that we're going to be able to start from scratch and create some more affordable housing for wealthy people.
All right, let's work together on that.
Okay, I'm sure I'll pay him anytime. I mean, I, I'm the one who went to the board of selectmen and presented it with the board's recommendation, with the planning board's recommendation. Yeah, they didn't do anything about it, but I don't give up that easy. So.
Jerry, it's quarter to ten and I'm out of cigarettes, so wrap it up.
With that, I'm going to, I'm going to put this on the agenda for the next meeting as well. But I think I gave you enough to mull over tonight with a lot of thoughts and we'll see where we want to go at the next meeting, but it, this was
worthwhile.
This was
Yeah.
It was I called a setback. I wasn't happy with the outcome. I'm sorry I found the outcome. I'm sorry. It popped its ugly head, but I'd rather find it now than later. So with that, thank you with this moment for Sharon and Elaine's input, and if you've got any ideas, send them to us.
Thank you for the time.
Appreciate it.
Dave, send me an email.
I'm gonna, I'll text your cell phone. I got that number.
You will. Okay, anything quickly on minutes? Any changes on the last minutes?
I already amended some. Olga sent me a couple of amendments.
No.
And I amended them.
Okay.
Not everybody knows.
To accept them as amended?
Yes.
I'm so moved.
Any second?
I'll second.
I'll go second. Any discussion? All of them favor? Aye.
Aye.
I will put on the agenda any approval or required plans to come in for the next meeting. I will have on the agenda some definitions. Please think about lot clearing and keep in mind open on ADU and see what you're thinking. And please get in tomorrow as early as possible, sign not only the covenant, but release with the plan.
Not earlier than nine AM because you guys are coming up way past my bedtime.
Someone's sleeping, yeah, someone's sleeping in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night, everyone. Good night. See you tomorrow.
Thank you.